I would like to call the October 14, 2021 regular board meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Aaron Holland will have our invocation. Tucker Green will lead our Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Stand our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the time for us to come together. And we pray that you will continue to keep our students and staff protected as they work through this school year. Keep everyone safe. And let us do your will as we move forward. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Mr. Gartrill made the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The agenda has been approved. The next item on our agenda is superintendent reports. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start this evening with our financial update from our CFO, Ms. Amy Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Our general fund of our budgeted revenue, we have collected 6.84% as of the end of September. And our expenditures are 17.54% of the approved budget. Of course, this is very early in the year, so don't get too excited about those expenditures. But our revenue, I'll remind you, July and August, most of our tax revenue goes into the prior year. So that's why those numbers are very low. In the month of September and October, you're going to see a lot more money come in, and by November, we'll be in good shape. We always have fund balance to hold us over, too. Fund 150.
Is this your school account?
No, not school. The fund update.
Understood.
And this is the new report. Yeah, there we go.
There you go.
Our Fund 150, I'll remind you, is our consolidation of funds. It's a fund that we combine a portion of our federal funds and a portion of our general fund to reduce the paperwork and red tape that come with federal programs. It actually causes a lot more flexibility for the schools, and I think they've appreciated the reduction in paperwork of the last year and a half. But the numbers there are reflected. It's what we spent. The transfers happen once a month. They're typically at least three weeks into the month before we can close out for prior month. So it's always going to be a little behind by the time we report here, but that is showing what we have spent to date. Debt service, of course, we have no debt. Just going down just a little bit. Capital outlay. Splot's revenue for September was, excuse me, $615,494.45. Interest earned was $3,333.84. And expenditures totaled $1,957,929.68. That brought our month-end splot balance to $9,454,086.88. Of course, we do have several large projects going right now with PJ Ag facility, Pickens High Ag facility, and we are still in the process of closing out our VoIP contract. Special revenue funds. Now, these are mostly federal grants. It also includes food service. We have collected 5.30% of our budgeted revenue and expended 17.52% of our budgeted expenditures. And then now if you go to the school report, every quarter, we bring you the school activity update. So this is for the first quarter of FY '22. It reflects the beginning balance, the receipts, the disbursements, and then the ending balance as of September 30 for each school. This is their internal account. It is not state tax money. It's not QBE earnings. It's not federal money. These are funds generated by each school for different activities. It could be from after-school babysitting program to yearbooks to pictures. But these are funds they can use that have a little more flexibility. They still have to follow all our protocols, but they have a little more flexibility with what they can do with that money. But we are required to report this to you every quarter. Do y'all have any questions? I do need to check with you, too. Did everyone receive a copy of the audit report for FY '21? Everybody? That's all I have.
Thank you. Next report will be operations and construction from our COO, Mr. Stacy Gillen.
Here we are. We, making this this month has been a little shorthanded. We had a couple people out with some major issues. One had some major surgery on his neck, and the other one had a mild heart attack. But the other guys pitched in. I wanted to thank all of them publicly for pitching in. The other three or four that were left carrying the ball did a great job. They stepped up. They did a lot of things they don't normally do in their normal day-to-day duties that doesn't really go under their expertise, but they jumped in there and helped us. I just wanted to thank them publicly. Transportation, it's always, we're still struggling with driver shortage, but we have added two drivers this month that finished the training last month. And when they're processed right now, training four more, they have finished their classroom work and are still with us, so that's usually a positive sign. They're probably going to get their license. So they'll start next week doing their drive time, and then the week after, they'll be tested and be able to get their license. So by this time next month, we'll be bringing you four more, I hope, which is great for Our biggest challenge with food service right now is also staffing. Beth's a little concerned about that. We're having to do a lot of subbing, and it's been real critical this year. She's worked a lot of shifts herself in the kitchen just to help out. But we are celebrating the National School Lunch this week, so stop by if you want to at one of the cafeterias, eat with them, tell them you thank them, appreciate them. It's a good thing. Martha's got a couple of pictures of, this was actually two days ago. I should have took them today because they're even further along. We've got this much still up at the site. They're working all weekend. We'll be laying block Monday. So we're moving. We're doing a good job. Hope to get some more of it in. Later in the meeting, you're going to be, you're going to have an action item for the high school ag facility. We have the GMP in. Pricing was wonderful. We were a little scared when we first got our estimates, but we beat those over $1 million. Plus, evidently, it was a great time of year to bid, and what I'm finding out is a lot of contractors are finishing projects, getting ready for new stuff, needing more work. So we got a minimum of three bids per bid package out of 18, 19 bid packages and up to five bids on half of them, probably. So we got a lot of turnout, got a lot of good bidders. That's why we come up with such good pricing. So I think y'all will be pleased to see that when it comes up here in a little bit. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gillen. And that concludes the superintendent reports. Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Young. The next item on our agenda is action items. The first one is approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented?
I'll give the motion.
All right. Mr. Holland makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith has made the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is five oh. PAR is approved as presented. The next item is approval of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports? Smith Smith presented.
So move.
All right. Mr. Green made that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Gartrill made the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is five oh. The next item is approval of the amended bus driver schedule. Mr. Young, will you give us some information on this change in the bus driver schedule?
I will, Madam Chair. I want to start by thanking the board for its leadership in assisting us in our efforts to recruit and retain drivers. As you all know, it's been a very challenging year for staffing in a number of different areas. Drivers are no exception. In the past, Pickens County School District had followed the state pay salary scale for bus drivers, which topped out at 19 years. The foresight of this board to allow us to extend that out through the 30th year will mean that our bus drivers will continue to receive step raises beyond that 19th year all the way to their 30th. And that will help to make us more competitive in the market as we seek out bus drivers. And I want to thank the board for their leadership in that and their willingness to help us do that. So this evening, I'm asking for approval of that new amended bus driver schedule with the steps to the 30th year.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the amended bus driver schedule as presented?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Mr. Holland made the motion. Mr. Smith made, seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I agree that this is a good move. We may, it seems to be a national shortage, and we may have to move further as we go into this, and we're aware of it. But this is a good step that we're able to take now, and hopefully this state will free up some funding for transportation to where it's going to get even better for these jobs in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree. I'm glad we're going to do this. I just wanted to make note that I appreciate a couple of drivers that brought this to my and our attention. And that's another prime example of don't be scared to speak up. We're glad to listen and make improvements where we can, and sometimes we don't know what we don't know, so.
Right. Absolutely. We do welcome community input. All right. All in favor? Five oh. The motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. The next item is the approval of MOU with Georgia Hope. Mr. Young, do you have any comments on this MOU?
I do, Madam Chair. This MOU will add additional staff. There again, there are staffing issues. This MOU will add additional staff through Georgia Hope to provide counseling and mental health services in our buildings through grant money that we receive. While we already have an approval of an MOU with Highland Rivers, this will add an additional organization, Georgia Hope, which serves the same purposes, so that we will be able to tap into the resources of both of those organizations to meet the mental health and counseling needs of our students at no cost to us from general fund. So this evening, I'm asking for the board to approve this MOU as well.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the MOU with Georgia Hope as presented?
So move, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Gartrill has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All right. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is the approval of GMP for Pickens High Ag Facility. Mr. Young, do you have any information or comments on the guaranteed maximum pricing for the PHS ag facility?
I do, Madam Chair, but I think it would be more appropriate to let Mr. Gillen make these comments. It's Mr. Gillen that's put in all of the legwork and has the ability to help pilot these things through so that they may land in safe harbor. So Stacy, could you share some information? We kind of kept it secret from you guys for a couple of days, I think. And so Stacy's going to share some specific information with you now.
It came in at $6,668,139. That's over $1 million savings from our original estimates setting down with architects and engineers and looking at this. We were tickled with that. We do have a considerable amount of contingency in there, and some of the contingency is for escalation of possible price increase on steel and stuff. We went ahead and put it in just in case. So all that will come back to us if we don't use it like it always does. And a change order at the end, when I come and say we're bringing you money back, and we always do, we always have, they've always been very good to beat their prices on anything like this. This was a process of at least eight months from the time y'all told me to go. It's probably more like a year and a half. But our original meeting started probably a year ago, and we brought in several members of the FFA group at the high school, all admin, even some of our community people put in some effort into this, looking at it. We let them tell us what they wanted, and we're building what they wanted. It's a mixture of a couple of counties around us, the best of each, and we're actually doing it cheaper than they built theirs, honestly. So I was tickled with all of that when it came down to them. But this is not my building. This is not individual people's buildings. This was a collaboration of eight or 10 people that understand ag and know what they needed, and that's what we tried to give them. So I feel good about it. Don't you, Mr. Young?
Oh, absolutely. I do.
Any questions?
I do have a commentary and question. You hit a great point. I'm really glad to see this night because pretty much the entire time I've been on the board, we have been talking and working on this. So it's good to finally get to this point, and there's a lot of people that's working on it. And I remember back when we first started talking about it, we made clear that it needed to be a collaborative effort, and that's what it was, and I'm really pleased with that. I'm really excited to see it. My only questions, slight concern, is the location of the facility and that. And you've worked with architects more and looked at the plans closer now. In the back of my mind, I'm just worried that is going to be a little bit of a tight space. Do you feel comfortable about?
You can get a, you can get a.
Not only for ag, but the tennis and everybody that's in that area.
Was it a 38 or a 42-foot trailer?
I think it's 38.
It's 38-foot trailer with a dually and a good neck trailer around there with no problem, no problem at all. We made sure of that. We made sure that they can circle the building, and we made sure they have different slips to back into to unload and stuff. So it's, we should be good. We should really be good with that. We have actually moved it out and over as far as we can without major grading work, and that's what we were trying to get away from. But we're in good shape. I think you'll be really pleased when you see how it lays when it's all said and done.
Appreciate that. Appreciate your work on it.
Stacy, we have an architect rendering of the building.
We, I don't have it with me right now. I do have one, but I was trying to get them to put it on a big board, and it didn't come in. I was going to have it sitting here on a big board, but we'll get you one. I'll send it to you. Well, yeah, the reason I feel good about the parking and that, that was a major consideration on the last two meetings we had, and they came up with the size of trailer that we actually, they would like to be able to make sure they can get around. So it's bigger than that, but the minimum we can give is 36 for sure, 38.
Well, Mr. Gillen, I appreciate your work, but I know it was a team effort, and I appreciate everybody's work on it.
Mr. Basin, Mr. Wallace, Jason, and Cassidy, and Tommy, and Greg was in on it from the get-go. Some of our alumni even come and spoke up on it. We had the entire group. Todd was involved from the get-go. And, you know, they're the ones that know. They use it. They go to the shows. They understand what they have to have to operate it. So I felt good. Because I didn't know. I can build my building, but I don't know the intricate parts they need.
Well, and thank you for bringing us a $1 million Christmas present.
I hope it's more than that before we finish.
Well, thank you, and thanks to everybody who worked on this. I think we're going to have a much better product as of it.
I'm excited about the prospects for the kids because I was in the FFA program, ag program at Pickens High School. We started in the fall of 1983. And even though the facilities we have now are smaller than our needs and dated, we've come a long way from Jack Barnes' ag class in 1983. I promise you that, and I'm very proud of that fact and excited for the kids.
That's great. All right. The next item on our.
I'll make the motion we approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. I'm sorry. I thought we'd gone through that. We have a motion to approve the GMP for the Pickens High School agricultural facility.
I'll second.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Okay. Mr. Green makes the motion. And Mr. Gartrill seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Five oh. Thank you very much. The next item is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 9, 2021 call meeting at 5:00 PM? The September 9, 2021 regular meeting at 6:00 PM? And the October 4, 2021 call board meeting at 1:00 PM?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Gartrill made the motion. Mr. Smith seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Five oh. The next item on the agenda is the approval of surplus. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus submitted by the Nutrition Services Department? This request for surplus is for various items of kitchen equipment, all apparently broken or above and beyond repair. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Mr. Green made that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Holland seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is five oh. All right. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Mr. Young, have we received any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
We have, Madam Chair.
Then I will read the board policy for public participation in board meetings. It is Board Policy BCBI. Meetings of the Board of Education are held to conduct the affairs and business of the school system. Although these meetings are not meetings of the public, the public is invited to attend all meetings, and citizens are invited to address the board at all regular meetings at the time shown on the agenda and in accordance with procedures established by the board or the superintendent. Public participation may be allowed at the discretion of the board at certain additional meetings under procedures set by the board. The superintendent shall make available the procedures to allow citizens to address the board at regular meetings in accordance with this policy. These procedures shall include a requirement that notice be given at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting, and that the chair shall have the discretion to limit the length of time for individual comments and the number of citizens speaking for or against an individual matter. These procedures shall be available at the superintendent's office and shall be given upon request to anyone requesting a copy. All comments to the board in accordance with this policy are to be brief and are intended for the board to hear from citizens, but not to take action. As referenced in Policy BCBI, citizens will be given five minutes to make their comments. Citizens may submit additional concerns in writing to the members of the board. The board will not permit anyone to become personally abusive of individual board members or board employees. The board will not respond to comments or questions posed by citizens in their presentations, but will take those comments and questions under advisement. All right. My understanding is that Mr. Greg Long has requested to speak to the board. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate it. Appreciate y'all taking the time to give me this to me. I think y'all won't, it's not got anything, any controversy or anything like that, so.
Well, we'll give you more than that. We'll give you five.
Well, I'm probably going to have to ask you, ask the chair for a little bit of leeway on my time, but I promise you, you're going to like what I got to say. Let me say this, and these are my remarks as I began to think of them. I believe in the future of agriculture. And that's just the opening line of the FFA creed. And that is a line that has been with me and resonated with me for my entire life, from the time I entered in 1983 at Cherokee High School. When I actually went to high school, back in those days, it was a lot bigger deal than it is now because of urbanization. But basically, what I wanted to bring to the attention of the board, and it's something that each one of you, I believe, already knows this, but agriculture is the number-one industry in the state of Georgia. And our ag programs across the state continually feed these jobs and these industries that continually have things to do with agriculture. And ag is very important, and it's always passionate, as probably most of you board members know. You know I'm very passionate about it and have been for several years. But I will say this much, and I want to pause here in my remarks and say this and do some commending from my point of view. Lula Mae Perry was the first person that I mentioned getting us a new ag facility, too, six or seven years ago, however long that's been. Every single superintendent since then, up to and including our replacements or our temporary superintendents, I've tried my best to get those superintendents to understand and realize the importance of the ag facility and the ag program within our county and how much it means to our community. Now, I appreciate Mr. Young. He is the first superintendent that has been honest with me, giving, I'm commending Mr. Young here this evening. He has given, he gave me, him and Mr. Gillen both gave me their word several months back when y'all gave them the freedom to go take care of this thing. I can tell you this, they kept their word. He's the first superintendent that hadn't lied to, with the exception of one that was let go last year. I'm not trying to bring up anything, but he had told me the same thing. He got it put on our splot. Mr. Young, thank you. Mr. Gillen, thank you. Thank you publicly. I know you, and I do a lot of talking privately. I don't like to get out and speak in front of folks. It's not because I'm scared to. I just don't, if there's not a need, I don't want to do it. But I felt there was a need this evening to come here personally on behalf of the Pickens County FFA alumni, on behalf of the state of Georgia, state FFA alumni, which I'm the president of. Not bragging, just letting you know how important that this moment is and how gratifying it is to finally see somebody take a little bit of interest in the importance of what our ag program means in this community, in our state, and to be perfectly honest with y'all way across the nation. So thank y'all. Thank y'all. I appreciate it. You don't know, it's, to be perfectly honest with you, and I'm not an emotional person at all, but it kind of really excites me to see all these changes and these things come into pass, especially when I drove by the middle school the other day and saw the metal on the ground getting ready for our kids. Todd Dobson has struggled, 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 carrying kids back and forth. He's finally getting something that he needs. Do not forget the fact that he still needs some greenhouses over there. And don't forget the fact that he's probably going to have to have some kind of machine over there to help him keep that place clean. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm keeping plugging. I'm keeping asking. I'm keeping, and that's the thing, you got to take stock in, and none of these ag teachers have asked me to do any of this. I began to look around and see what every other county had, and I saw how many more kids we had involved in ag and showing in all aspects of the FFA and the ag program in our community. And I said, you know what? We've got to catch up. We need. We need... Our teachers need these items. They need to be able to teach these kids and get them ready. So basically my remarks, and I didn't mean to get off on that tangent, but those of you that know me, a lot of times I'm pretty long-winded anyway. Five minutes is so tough, especially for a Baptist preacher. So listen to this. You've got two...
Mr. Long, I know you have more to say, but do you realize how much trouble I'm going to be in with other people if I let you go on and have other people on?
I understand, I understand, I understand. Oh, I'll speak on my way back to my seat. I'll get in every bit of it that I possibly can. But the ag folks in our community...
I tried to stop you.
The ag folks in our community patiently watch and we're very happy, I can tell you this. Folks I've talked to are very tickled to death about what's happened, what's going to happen. Don't let up the throttle and if we have to use that extra money, Mr. Gillen, let's not shortchange them, let's just pour it out there, we got it. Let's write the folks a check if we have to have it. Thank you, there you go.
All right, the next item on the agenda is board comments.
I feel like we should play "God Made a Farmer" by Paul Harvey. Ever heard that?
All right, I have a couple of things I would like to say. First of all, Mr. Long, it is so rare that people come to say thank you and I appreciate you doing that. And I am sure that this will not be the end of the improvements to the agricultural program. But I do appreciate your expressing the gratitude and that's very heartwarming. We don't get that very often. I would also like to say thank you to the maintenance department for stepping up and helping because when you have two people out of our maintenance department, that's a... That's a large percentage. And they filled in, they stepped up to the plate and I am particularly grateful for that. But I would also like to express the board's best wishes for... For a speedy recovery to those two gentlemen who have some serious issues, some serious health issues, and we hope that you have a speedy recovery. I hope that you'll be able to come back to work, not... And that's not coming from a board member, that's coming from someone who hopes that you will have good health and be able to come back and do what you want to do and enjoy doing.
David is back.
Is he back? That's great, that is wonderful.
He'll be back full-time Monday.
That's wonderful.
He had a test done this week and had to be off.
That's great. All right, we have wonderful employees and we really do appreciate you. All right, the next item on our agenda is to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Mr. Gartrill has made the motion to adjourn. Would anybody like to make a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Green, is there any further discussion? All in favor? 5-0, we are adjourned at 6:34 PM.